Okay, so ten, eleven, sixteen swimming pools, ten, eleven, eight, three landscape features, fences, walls, driveways and culverts, and adding a section eight titled mitigation zone to ten, nine. That is a mouthful. Wayne, would you come in?
The swimming pool, we're increasing the height of a swimming pool fence to comply with State of Utah guidelines to six feet. So that's what that particular part is. And there's a couple of different sections in our code that pertain to that. So the planning commission has reviewed this, had a public hearing, and recommend the change to you to raise the height of the swimming pool fence to six foot. So that's, that's what that particular one is.
So even though it says all those other things, then it's...
That's just a swimming pool.
The reason was the swimming pool.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we don't just reference the state guidelines, state code, whatever, so that we're not...
And we're always updated.
Councilor, the commission yesterday had it on.
I thought you was answering your question.
Yeah, it facilitates our people who are using it, it's one less place they have to go to, to find, find it out. So that's primarily why, why we're including it and we make a reference that it is the state code for that. So that, other than just say it complies with state code, then what's state code? And the questions always come back to us. So it just saves that.
And I realize that my, my concern is, I know we reference state code in other areas of our code. So if we're kind of...
Linking it to.
Sometimes not linking, sometimes linking. It seems inconsistent.
I like the linking also, just because we say it's state code, we can link it to the state code, and if they change it and we don't catch it, it's still updated to our code.
And I, I guess I could say too, that this is a question that always comes up, so it's always out there. There may be some less ambiguous, or less other questions that we feel that it's easy to say it complies with state code, and that question comes up once a year, and so it's not a big issue. But where this constantly comes up, and we felt that it would be good to further reference our own figure in there, so people know what, what that is. But I understand, I understand what you're saying. And we, we kind of look at that too. Is this, is this good wording for that particular ordinance, or can we just reference it complies with state code and let it be at that? So...
My biggest concern is the inconsistency. If I'm a builder and I'm looking across all the... Sometimes not saying it, sometimes I'm saying it. That just gets super confusing.
And when they do it for other cities, they know what the code is, but if ours isn't updated, then they say, oh, we can get away with something. What if we changed the wording to say the seventy-two inches measured, or in compliance with state code, whichever is greater, or whatever? Just to, just so that it kind of says the inches, what you're saying, if somebody just glances at it, they see it, but also gives us the caveat of state code in case it changes.
I think the question's still there with them. Is it, is that state code, or state code changed and it's not six feet anymore?
Right, well, that's why I said or.
Yeah, but they still...
So if you say or...
So they come to us and say, which is it? Is it, is that state code, or is state code now six feet happy? And so...
But if we hyperlink it to whatever the state code is, it would automatically show up?
Yeah, as a builder, I prefer the way you're doing it. Because I need some form of reference, right? And it, it's just nice for me to be able to say, what is currently the obligation on my part for my client to meet the standard? And if I look and go to our, our ordinances and type in swimming pool, height, boom, done, check, move on. And I, I appreciate that, so thank you.
And I don't, I don't think this is one that's going to change much.
No.
So if it were changing frequently, then I could see the, maybe rationale in just referencing state code, but I don't see this changing. So it's for us to have to go back and change it in a year, two years, three years, I don't, I don't see that. So that's another reason that we, I would put it in there by way of reference.
Yes, I just think, similar to what David's saying, is if we have it consistent with other things and say, yes, I know as a builder you want to see the exact things, but if we have that or in there with a hyperlink to the state code, if it does change, if there's an accident of some sort and they come back and say, the city was not compliant with state code, and then does that come back on us because we weren't? Because we didn't notice they had changed it? Because it's not like a law that we keep on top of? It's not one of those that's in the newspaper? It just happened? So I don't know, that's my concern is, if they changed it, how would we know?
I think it's still going to come back to...
That's a general problem.
Right.
We got that problem a lot.
That's what happened with this. It's probably changed for quite a while back.
Right.
And we didn't realize it, so...
Yeah, but what happens is, is somebody's going to call Jody and say, because that's typically me, Jody, what's your state, what's the code? What's the ordinance? You know, what do I need? What... And she's going to say, well, our state, our, our code says this, right? And that's the information she's going to give us, and I'd rather it be clearly defined in our ordinances personally on something like this. Especially when everything else in our fencing ordinance is defined by us. It would be weird to say, here's all of the city's restrictions on fencing, and for this one, you need to hit this hyperlink to go find out.
We get, we take a lot of questions on fencing. It's just, it, there's, I don't, it's not ambiguous in the ordinance, but there's a lot of specificity to it, and, and so it's something that takes up our time in explaining to people questions, answering their questions about fencing and the details and things. So it, just one less hurdle that we have to deal with in talking to people. They come in with them knowing that it's six foot and now...
And you're mentioning in here spas, hot tubs, any similar devices, do they have to have the six foot?
No, that's just the title of the ordinance.
Okay, just the swimming pool, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, because I had, you know, as we read it and it's all kind of put in there.
Yeah.
Other question?
Yeah, Doral. Does this put any existing pools out of compliance that you're aware of?
Um, it could.
Is your six foot, Ben?
What's that?
Your pool wall, your pool fence?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it could, but...
Some people don't even have a fence at all.
Yeah, they do have a cover, but technically we require both, a cover and a fence, but it, we're not going to have, you know, they're not going to be required to go back and...
And this is for outdoor pools only, right? So indoor pools fall under different rules?
Fall under building code things, so that there, there's no fencing required on the indoor, indoor pool.
I wouldn't like an indoor pool, so I could try that ordinance.
Find somebody, there's a few of them around the city.
Well, if we get flooding again, you might get a wish.
Yeah, that's a mud bath. She's already had that. Now, with that all being said, I get exactly what they're saying. I just think, I agree with you on this particular ordinance and other ordinances where we have stricter rules than the state and not strict, I think, I think the consistent inconsistency works for me.
And, and we look at that too, in making judgment calls, try to. So any other questions on that particular one?
It, it went from what, to six foot? Was it previously four or five or...
Forty...
Forty-two, I think.
Forty-two inch.
For sure.
This is good, okay.
Yeah. The other parts to item one are, as you'll recall, a number of months ago, and maybe a couple of years ago, we added some districts to our public facility zone, particularly dealing with mitigation. And we approved those, but we didn't incorporate that into our tables. And so that's all this does. We're not changing the zoning, we're just now, we realized we overlooked putting those into our tables that we have. So that's, that's what that...
That's a good clarification, because I was reading through it and I thought, I think this is the same, but I can't tell what's different.
So, and again, this is more of a process issue. I personally don't think you need to put them in your tables. Now let me explain why. Because that's part of what happens with codification. Is when codification happens, they'll take all the ordinances that we passed over the last two, three, four years, and they will then build the code with the tables with all the other stuff, the way that it needs to be done. And I think that's the codification process.
In this case, it didn't get done. So rather than wait for nine months...
Well, what I'm saying is...
For codification, the year to do it.
It's still not getting done by you doing this.
No, it, it, it will. It's now, it's in the ordinance. So before it was, it was on a piece of paper.
Well, but I think we're supposed to be sending those pieces of paper to the codification company. And then they should be editing the table online.
We do, but we didn't call for an edit in the ordinance that we passed of the table. We only called for the creation of the zone. And because we did not call for the editing of all references to it, it does not get put into the table.
Okay, that seems a bit backwards to me.
I know. So we just, we, we established a zone, and that was it. And so that didn't call for though, to identify in all ordinances where that zone was referred to and add it. American Legal didn't do it. They had the ordinance, and we have the ordinances, we've adopted an overlay zone that has mitigation, no trespassing, but it didn't get into the table until we pass it as part of that code.
Of the table.
Of the table.
Okay, like you said, weird.
Definitely.
We should fix that.
We've got a new company now, so I think we can work more closely with them in the codification issues. And they're willing to do it, not at year's end, but as we go along.
Okay.
So that should help that process.
That would be nice.
Just, should we tell them, just as a, as a notice that it's Civic Link, which is a subsidiary of Jones and Dammel, right? If they're subsidiary of...
They're all...
Yeah, and they're the, when Mike Hansen has come in and talked to us about things before, he, he's kind of over that.
So hopefully we'll pick those things up.
And we use some of our community development grant funds to pay for, for that service.
The same thing with, well, yeah, it's the tables. There's several tables that needed to be updated, so that's, those are included in that. The zoning's not changed, they're just being added to the, to the tables.
Can we put TBD on those last four?
To be determined.
Right, because, so when do we think that, or just, at least they're just in the table, whether they have any information or not?
Well, they, they have to be there somehow, but I guess, these are weird zones.
Right.
They're not based on the size of the lot, they're not based on really anything, they're...
Just based on their location.
So...
Their purpose.
I, I, I wonder, rather than TBD, if we should put not applicable.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, NA, non-applicable.
If, if it's, if it is to be determined, then fine, put to be determined, but if it's like, doesn't apply to this zone at all, then we should put NA.
Yeah, like this building, doesn't, public facility that really doesn't apply. Because our public facility is adjacent to a residential district and it would apply. So we have to comply with setbacks with a public facility, Billy, with a public facility.
We have PPD, PT, PD on there, on public facilities, so that's why I'm just saying.
Well, they're both mitigation zones though.
Those, those other two.
The two.
Yeah, we've already passed the public facilities one. The two above that. But we don't have actually, we have not put any of our city structures into a public facilities zone, if that makes any sense. We have not done that, and so I think before we do that, but we have to keep in mind that if it's adjacent to a residential district, we have to follow according to our code the setbacks that are adjacent to the residential district.
Right, okay.
I'd rather leave it, I mean, food for thought, look at that further and see if it needs to be changed, but leave it right now a little bit more open ended.
I guess the to be determined could be that it becomes non-applicable later.
Could be.
Okay.
So, okay, that's, that's that for those.
Okay, thanks Wayne.
Thank you.
All right, and are you commenting on item two, or is that Ben's, the request from Summit Creek developers?
Probably have it from Ben.
Okay.
We're aware of it, but I am, made it a request.
Okay, and does anybody have any additional questions for Wayne before he takes his other seat?
Before we call you back up?
Yep. All right, Ben, the floor is yours. So a request from Summit Creek developers for a change in zoning from R12 PUD to R119, Thousand Oaks, Platte, F, lots 161 to 167.
Did you guys happen to get a map or anything associated with this?
We got your application and the map.
Yeah, so there's those seven lots that are in F that are, I guess, high level, we would like to just rezone those from R12 PUD to R119. And I think it's also, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, it also is kind of helping to sort of clean up or correct some of the zone map issues where the map showed them as R119, but they're really R12 PUD, and we want them to be R119, so anyways. For, for this, for setback reasons and part of our development, we'd like those lots to be R119.
All right, very good. Any questions for Ben?
Does, does Wayne have any input on that?
We agree.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay.
Okay, that helps.
Okay, just in case that didn't come through the mic, planning commission is on board with that.
Well, and really, this is a formality. The city council is just recommending that the planning commission hold a public hearing and consider the rezone. It's not a done deal yet.
That's how, that's what I was going to ask, because I know that one of the...
This is the final.
One of the other things that has to happen when we do this is we have to make sure that we talk to the neighbors, and there's at least two properties, Norman Davis and I guess Panthera, which is that you guys do. So Norman Davis, we need to talk to them.
And he will be contacted with a letter notifying him of the public hearing, including the application for the rezone, and what the new setbacks would be that they're looking to. Now remember that, again, any lots that are adjacent to a different zone, they're going to have to comply with the stricter setbacks on their, the sides that are adjacent to it. So it's going to be a little bit confusing when we look at the subdivision map that they turn in, because we're going to have to pay attention that those adjacent sides do have the more restrictive side back setbacks. So are those ones across the street where we have all the names there, are those are still R1? They're not R19, are they? They're R12 PUD. Okay, R1 PUD, 12 PUD. So, and then these ones will go in, and then the ones across the street, which Northern Slope hasn't platted that one big lot, then there's Norman Davis on the one side and Stanley Smith on the other, just across the street. So there are a few people that will be notified. Stanley Smith is already in R119. Okay. So he will not need to be notified. The only ones are the ones that were part of the original Thousand Oaks Platte F that have not been absorbed into other Summit Creek subdivisions that have already been approved. All right. So it's a little confusing, but we'll make sure we, we review it well and, and get the appropriate setbacks on the Mylar before it comes to the council.
All right, any other comments or questions on that? Okay, very good. Item three, Jody mentioned that it would probably be a good idea if we actually formalized some of the decisions that we thought we'd already made. So resolution appointing Wayne Franzen as the zoning enforcement officer. Wayne acting as interim zoning enforcement officer already, so we appreciate his service so far, and would like to make it legal. Any comments or questions here?
Nope.
Okay, and then item four, resolution appointing Chris Tambasco as a building official inspecting new homes for compliance with the city. I believe we talked about this in our last council meeting, so this is just Chris assuming some of the roles that Craig Northup had previously...
Right, so he's not doing like the, the required inspections, he's doing more like the fire alarms, the...
Well, the fire alarms are being done by Ted right now, but Ted is looking to have...
I'm giving sprinklers.
Oh, okay, so is Chris doing the fire alarms then?
No.
Oh, you're talking part of that.
On the outside.
That's part of the sprinkler, right?
Chris would be doing, Chris would be doing the driveway, so the slope of the driveway, making sure that the culvert is installed and that it daylights correctly. If a rock line ditch needs to be installed, he'd be making sure of that, checking for retaining walls and accessory buildings, and making sure the setbacks are appropriate. So anything that deals with city code, he would be doing sunrise, still does our inspection of the residential home.
Okay, how does that work when he is the contractor on some of the building projects?
Uh, you know...
Great question. I mean, obviously he would be conflicted out of...
I mean, it passed pretty easy, but maybe, just, just curiosity.
I believe that, you know, Wayne has been doing it in the interim, and so we would have, then send out our zoning enforcement officer to enforce the code, and then he would inspect that.
Chris, exercising contracting life.
Oh.
He's not building anymore.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be a conflict there. If there is, we can, we can make that adjustment.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Item five, city budgetary items, including large purchases.
But, but I'm curious, your other engagements, do you have any sort of... Yeah, do you want to take this one?
Okay.
Oh, you're talking, okay, so, Chris, I don't know if you're talking to us or if you're...
You got some background noise there, Chris?
No, I was saying if Ted wants to take this one.
Okay, well, he stepped up, so I guess he does. I guess that's a yes.
He can have another carpool.
I'm going to go back to sleep.
If we buy a large fire engine?
I think we already did.
Oh, shoot, well, this is asking for forgiveness then. No, so, one of the things we need to start equipping the engine, and we've got a lot of equipment, we've ordered and was approved previously by the city council. Some of the things that haven't, haven't been ordered or approved to be purchased for the new truck, but we still need are some items, but right now specifically, we're looking at extrication equipment. And this is the big jaws of life you hear about, the big cutters and rams and stuff like that. We have some older hydraulic ones that we have on our current engine, but we don't have any for the new engine. So started doing some investigating and, and looking at our current budget for this fiscal year, and we, we have enough budget in our equipment line item to, to get some extra, one piece of extrication equipment this year. So I started getting some quotes and, and investigating different types of extrication equipment. The one that we're, we're proposing to purchase is the same equipment that Spanish Fork and Santa Quinn and Salem and a lot of our surrounding fire departments use, and we want to use the same equipment, just so we're all familiar with each other's equipment. It's probably, as far as cost wise, it's probably the middle of the road. It's, it's not a Cadillac and it's not a Volkswagen, it's more like a Chevy or a Ford type piece of equipment. I guess that depends on your definition.
Yeah.
Person...
Year are we talking about?
What's that? What year? Yeah. I should say nineteen seventies Volkswagen Bug or something. Better yet, the Gremlin, was that?
Oh, yeah.
So it's not a Gremlin and it's not a Cadillac, it's kind of the middle of the road type piece of equipment. And we have enough in the, in the budgets this year to buy the one piece. Ultimately, there's three pieces that go with this. This is all battery operated equipment, so the stuff we have now is hydraulic operated, so you have to carry around a big hydraulic pump along with all the equipment. This is all battery operated, so no longer do we have to carry the pump and all that kind of stuff with us.
Those, the spreader is that jaws of life.
Spreader is the jaws of life, yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
Most people know by the jaws, we call it spreaders, but most people outside of fire note by jaws. So we would start with that purchase. I don't know if you, he included the quote in your packets, but okay. That would be the purchase this year, and then probably next budget year, we would see if we could get the cutters. Those are the two most critical pieces.
What's the life on the batteries and the Milwaukee eighteen V eight amp hour batteries? So how, what's the life of those?
Well, I'm not su, so they send you a battery and a backup battery. The batteries on eighteen volt, are you asking about the life, that they'll last?
Like, well, we need to buy them every year, every two years?
Well, so they're rechargeable batteries. And as far as how long they last, I'm not sure, because those that I've talked to haven't had theirs go bad yet.
Oh, good.
And they send you a couple of batteries and you can recharge them, replace them. The equipment itself is a, I was called a lifetime bumper to bumper, other than the battery. So anything that goes wrong with it, anything that goes wrong with it, they, they...
How often do we use these, this piece of equipment? I mean, we haven't had one, but how often in Woodland Hills does some of our, our partner cities have to come up and use theirs?
We, we do have equipment we use on our engine, it's just hydraulic. So we have it on our engine now. We use a lot with train with, so in our trains, we use it quite a bit. As far as actually on calls, you know, there's probably a few times a year. I mean, you don't use them a lot, but when you, when you need them, you need them.
We thought we were going to have to extricate a car that went way off down, left the road in that condition. If, if we had to have extricated, our equipment wouldn't have worked. We couldn't have hauled all that down there deep in the brush off a cliff.
The one that went off.
But this one, we could, this one we could, and we have muscle men that would do that like Ted, you know?
Yeah, that's the advantage of being the chief now, I make the assignments, I don't have to...
This is a smart tool. The current equipment, I think, was given us by another, like Spanish Fork, when they upgraded to electric, so it served our purpose, but...
And when will we receive it?
Um, I think he said there about eight to ten weeks, if we want, once we order it. And then, then that would be come from this year's budget, this fiscal year, and the next fiscal year, we'd like to look at getting the next piece. And then our...
Does this operate separately from that next piece, or would you be able to start using it immediately?
We can start using this immediately, and this is probably the one that gets used most. You can do most of your stuff on extrication with this, that's why we're ordering it first. The cutters would be next, because they're next most used, and then the rams probably last. And there's a few other things that we'll need to equip, but we're just, we're working through some different budget items. Try not to spend all your money at once.
A lot of our people have taken courses at school to learn to run this equipment, so we're, we're ready to go if it arrives, if it, when it arrives.
Okay, any other questions for Ted?
What is the plan? Do we know what the plan is yet for the, the old engine?
Well, yeah, we've had it... Well, yeah, we've had a few discussions about that. And I think what we're going to try first, so this new engine we have is probably not going to be in service for a few months or so, because we're just, it's taken a while to get all the hoses and all that kind of stuff. We may end up piecemealing some older stuff we have in there till we get hoses, I heard today. Found out today about October, where we get probably some of our hoses. Some stuff comes quicker, but anyway, so this new engine is going to be a little while getting in service. So we'll keep the old engine around till then and then we'll probably hang on to it and then next summer, so if you were, we have that full time wildland crew that we make available to respond on inner local agreements, interstate agreements to other states through a couple of different EMAC and IROC, they're called, but they're state support and national support type, and they make quite a bit of money when they do that. We, they also will take structure engines and they even make more money. So we would like to put that available next year, since we'll have two of them, and see if we can get it out on some events and start generating some income from that engine. The trick with that is you have to find, it has to be staffed by four people, so you gotta find four people who have flexible schedules and able to respond, but we have one in town that's ready to go, he's, he's willing, we just gotta find a few to support him.
He's willing to do almost anything.
So if any of you want to go get structure certified this winter, we'd appreciate it and, and want to go out on fires next summer.
I'm good, thank you though. I don't know where I fit that in my schedule. How are we doing this year on getting our, our team out? I've seen them a lot here. They've been able to get out yet? Who's managing that system?
So there's, there's really two of us, myself and then I have John Wallace helping with that. No, two things, there haven't been any incidents yet to be called out on, so this is a, this is all listing through the state. So we, we make ourselves available, but the state organizes it all. And we have to make, put our all of our equipment on the state site and then they build teams, the state does. And so when another state calls and needs help, they can send a team. The state's still working on building the team. So that hasn't been done yet, one, and secondly, there just haven't been any incidents that have been coming out of it. We hope to, we'd love to, because that's what generates their income to pay for them.
You know, some Utah teams have gone to Canada. I don't know if ours would qualify for international work if they're just statewide. They're anticipating that Washington State actually would be, has a heavy risk right now for, for additional wildfires this year, so a lot of the Utah teams are thinking that might be one of the first locations.
Yeah, so in answer to Canada, the state of Utah, I don't believe has an, a international agreement with Canada. Some others might, we don't. There have been no departments out of Utah that I'm aware of listed through this EMAC system that have went to Canada yet. I can, we can see on, yeah, it might be some private agencies going, we can see, I can, we've got a website where I can see all the other units that are listed and if they're gone or not. And then there's, there's two systems, there's what they call the EMAC, which is kind of interstate, so we go to respond to other states. Then there's an IROC, which is more of a state of Utah, where we respond on more state Utah type stuff. And so there's two systems we're, we're available in. Neither of those have been called out, but you know, if Washington gets busy and they call Utah, so it all comes through Utah. They don't call Woodland Hills, they call the state of Utah, who then goes start calling the departments.
It's on, it's on a list of, like a rotating list, right? You'll know when you're second in line, first in line kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, so they've got a, yeah, there's a list and there's probably twenty-five departments on there right now from the state. And it's one of those things where they, when they have an incident come up, they call you and they say, is your crew? Yes, we have a crew of three and they say, okay, twelve hours, we need you to report in Washington. So the crew's gotta be ready to go to a moment's notice.
So I guess my only concern I'd have with this is, you know, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of really cool tools. I love them.
Me too. It's fun shopping for fire stuff.
I, I can imagine. I'm, I'm never gonna do that because that sounds like a bad rabbit hole for me. For me, it comes down to if we've got this tool, now not as cool as this one, but we've got this tool, eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-two, or eleven thousand, you know, what, five hundred ish? I think, is there a better place for us to be utilizing that in the city than upgrading a tool that we already have?
And tell your daughter it's a car accident and you can't get her out, yeah.
Well, I think if we play the what-if game, we can play that game all day long, right? The hypotheticals will, because there's probably more tools that we could buy for hypothetical use as well.
So, let me, let me kind of outline this a little bit. There are certain tools required to be on a fire engine to be NFA compliant, right? NF, NFPA compliant. Extrication tools are one of those things we have to have on the engine. So to put this one in service, the options are, we take it off the old engine, our tools we have now and put them on the new engine, or we get new tools. If we take them off the old engine, then our old engine is no longer compliant with NFPA and wouldn't be able to respond. So in, in short, we would like to have on both. Hydraulic tools are just going by the wayside now, there's just nobody who gets those anymore and rightly so, they're just you're tethered, right?
It's the same reason I ditched the cord on my skill saw.
Understood, right, right. So, so in, in short, this, these are tools along with several others, we have to have to be NFA compliant. When the council authorized that funding to buy tools some months ago, that gets us a lot of our nozzles and hoses and all that kind of stuff. But the extrication wasn't included in that, just knowing we would do some research and figure that out, so. So that's one of them. Now, can we still respond? Yes, we can respond without it. If we responded to a car where we needed it and someone expired because we couldn't and we weren't NFPA compliant, then we open ourselves up to, you know, lawsuits and stuff like that.
Ted, just to clarify too, so that would be required on the old engine in order to be part of the deployment on the state website, right?
Yeah.
And, and I mean, so eat, I would just, in terms of even dollars and cents, I mean, we could make as much on one deployment as the cost of the tool alone, whereas if we don't, we've just basically got a very expensive piece of equipment that serves no I mean, I, I'm not, I agree with you and I think it needs to be explored, but to me, it seems like if we're gonna look at this second engine as a revenue stream for the city, we need to make sure that it's operational.
And that's why my first question was on that engine, right? What is the future of that engine? If that engine's going to be sold, I would vote strip it of its spreader
Yeah.
and put it on the new engine and save ourselves the money and probably dump this into mitigating, you know, rock line ditches or something along those lines for infrastructure.
Keep in mind, this is coming out of the fire budget, it is a budget line item in our budget.
Well, and I get that, you know, and I want to make sure also that potentially, you know, looking forward, I think oftentimes we, we treat, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be wrong on this. We treat fire as a enterprise fund, right? Whereas
As a what?
As an enterprise fund, right? Where it's kind of locked down or in, and I wonder if excess funds that aren't spent in any department could pool back into a general pool to help the city as a whole.
Well, that's what we do in June.
Well, of course.
But my point. One of the very first council trainings I went to, there was a lady, I can't remember her name, who got up and basically said, I can tell what your priorities are by looking at your budget. So out of, out of, out of our budget, if you look at it, basically our priorities are snow plowing, roads, fire, water, and then the personnel that we have. Those are the five priority. So. But a budget is also not a so when we create the budget, we create it with those five priorities in mind. Unless we have a really, really good reason, I'd hate to take money out of one of those areas. And when I say fire, I mean public safety, because it's not just fire, but it's also the sheriff department as well. But in June, we do have that opportunity. If, if funds have not been spent, we have to spend them, we have to put them somewhere. So that's when we have that opportunity to kind of move things around.
Well, for sure, right? And I'm, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not here to pick a fight with anybody, more just procedurally, right? Is, I guess from my perceived perception, you know, if there's a budget on our big budget that ever has excess funds, it's typically in the fire side of things. And I'd love to just see, you know, them sliding back. But also, I'm, I'm here to discuss, right, to, to learn more, those are just some of my thoughts and feelings.
And I'm working on correcting that.
But yeah, up until last year, Ben, you, that was not, that was not the case up until last year. Last year, the first year, we carried over large amounts, the other years, it just rolled up into the fund balance.
And, and that would make sense since last year was my first year, so.
So, yeah.
Hundred percent of my experience is going to be growing up. So, thank you, I appreciate the historical knowledge.
I'll work on getting it spent then, if I, if I have to do that.
I would prefer not, right? I don't want a mentality of, you know, if you don't spend it, you lose it and thus your budget next year would be smaller, right? So we better spend it, right? I'd rather have more of a, and again, my words here, we're going to say something different than what my heart's feeling. I want it to be, these are the funds of Woodland Hills, right? And thus, we come together and say, where is the highest priority? And then you're coming to the table saying, hey, we gotta take care of this drainage issue now. It's helpful, you have, you're invested in drainage issues, right? But to be able to say, hey, you know what, we're going to have an excess of X amount and thus it comes through. I'm not, again, saying that this is an excess and if we're going to use the engine that we currently have and it needs the, the spreaders to go out and fulfill the requirements to do a fire in California or, let's be honest, Texas is probably going to need us soon.
Yeah.
Right, then it, it, it changes
Yeah.
the document, right? So I need, I'd say then yes, probably this makes sense.
And, and fire equipment is, what I'm learning, not knowing before, is very expensive stuff. I mean, you just can't go buy a pair of gloves for fifty, yeah, well, not even fifty dollars. I mean, structured gloves, you know, for a structured firefighter, I mean, you know, you're talking a couple hundred dollars for those gloves. So, it's very expensive stuff and we are in the process of updating some of our gear as well, so, because some of it, and even like the extrication equipment. NFPA, I don't know the specifics of extrication on years, but stuff's only good for so long. Once it's so old, NFPA won't certify it anymore. Yeah. So.
Doesn't really have a resale value even after it ages out.
Yeah, yeah, but, so some of this stuff in, in effect is, is not only just buying it because, because we want the cool new tools, which that's part of it, but we're, we're trying to stay in compliance with, with NFPA and also keep ourselves out of liability issues when responding to emergencies. Like just example, the fire engine, I mean, our old fire engine that we have now has, has reached its NFPA life, although it's still a good engine, we can still use it, but
Thank you.
That's the reason for the new ones.
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to make a quick comment on that if I can.
Okay, Brian, let me get back to you, Carrie was saying something and then we'll come back to you.
Kind of mentioned that the old engine is aging out, but we're still planning on using it even though it's not in compliance because it's more of a backup or what we, so we can continue to use it even if it's not compliant and we'll be okay.
Yeah, they, so NFPA puts a life, and I don't know the specifics of it on the engines. Hence the reason why we got our new one, because ours was reaching that NFPA life, but it, it still can be used in emergencies and it, it becomes our second engine in.
I just wanted to make sure, because I remembered that discussion when we ordered the new truck, but when, the way you mentioned it, we're not in compliance, then that kind of made me think, can we still use it?
Yeah, exactly what that means, I don't know, I mean.
But again, that compliance, we are meeting it when it comes to an out of state deployment, right? I mean, that, that to me is the, the key purpose in holding on to that.
Yeah, because they're looking at, so the out of state response is not for a, it's not a structural response, right? They're going on wildland fires, they're there for structure protection, but it's a wildland fire, so.
But weren't you saying that we could get additional revenues?
Yeah.
If we are deployed?
Yeah.
Is it for structural protection or for structural response?
It's for structural protection on a wildland fire, just like when we had our city and we had all our engines here, they were here.
Okay, I just, I, I just want to make sure, because it, it sounds like, you know, on the one hand, we're saying that the old engine is not fully in compliance, but I, but it is, I mean, it is for the purpose that we're going to keep.
That we're gonna keep, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Brian.
So, go ahead, Ted.
Research on it, but from everything I understand, as long as you've and you, they, they come, the state comes and inspects your engine first to make sure everything's good with it and then, then they'll make it available.
All right, all right, Brian.
So just a couple of points on this new engine. Our, our old engine, if I'm not mistaken from talking to Craig, it's actually out of compliance as a first response engine. So you have to have a, a new engine or rebuild every ten years for a first response. A second response engine does not have to meet that standard, so that's where our, our second engine comes into play. When they can go out of state, it can go to another city, those kind of things. And we still have a, an engine in, in the department to respond to our city. Number two, for citizen, on the citizen's side of things. So we enter everything into what's called INFRS, this is one of the jobs that I do for the fire department. And all that is tracked and it tracks our response times and things like that, which this, this insurance companies take and base your insurance on, and, and as some of you know, there have been some people who have lost their insurance up here. Their carriers were not, will not carry it because we're in the wildland interface. And our response times are, are part of that. And the right gear and having those inspections and making sure that we're in compliance is, is all part of that. So this, having these tools on both engines is really good for our citizens to help maintain our insurance policies and, and help keep them lower. That's one of the reasons why some cities end up going with a, a, a paid crew because their response times from their volunteers are, are lower. And they have to meet a certain response time on, on INFRS and they pull that right directly from INFRS. And that's, that's part of FEMA. And so that, this is important for us to have for the citizens to help maintain and their insurance and keep their insurance rates low. We're still on a top tier for insurance and, and that's what we're trying to maintain here.
Great point. All right.
As providers, I mean, they did an outstanding job. It was, they did great job, so.
That was a tough day.
Yeah, there was a tough one.
All set. All right, thanks Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, Chris, we're there, any other large purchase items to discuss? I can't think of any.
Nope.
Okay, all right, city grants, UDOT.
The community development grant, I've been trying to contact all the people who were on our initial committee back in twenty twenty-one. Some of them are full on board, some have moved or changed jobs, so I'm trying to just reach out to a few other people, there were people at our last town hall that contacted me that said they were interested. So I'm just going to have that hopefully by our next meeting and a charter statement so that we can have it on the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you, and ARPA?
And as I said last time, when we talked about ARPA, that I was relinquishing that to whatever we thought should be. I have not had any updates on any other grants. The, I had people looking into it and so far, everybody's saying you can get a zero percent interest, but you can't get there isn't really many matching grants right now for cities our size.
We were going to have a presentation this night, tonight from Mark Sauvien about a proposal for the ARPA grant for the three phase at the water tanks, I guess. But because of some other things, they weren't able to get the proposal done and they're looking for the second meeting in August.
Okay, perfect. That's good to know. And you told them how much we have, right? So that they stay in that budget. I don't want to have to allocate additional funds because we're only dealing with the money we have.
They, Corbett should be aware of it, so, but I will remind him.
Yeah, maybe I'll.
Well, and the presentation that should all come out. I would hope that there's discrepancy. All right. Thank you, Carrie. Um, Councilmember Kinnison, Kinnison on fire.
Just a quick mention of, uh, the chipping that was completed by Utah County. We're really lucky. They were called off on some fire somewhere and they were able to get it done without. Typical in the spring, we have some interruptions and didn't happen. So, uh, and I talked to them and they said, you know, we had a lot of requests to do some chipping during these weeks that they committed to us. And they said, but we choose you. And that's due to relations that really honestly relationships that have, that have been positive over the years for them. And so they like coming here and it was, anyway.
Some of their newer people, I, I ran into a group of those that were newer that we were so excited to come to your town. We'd never been there and it was so fun. You had it so organized and, and it made it easy for us to, because it was laying out the right way. And they actually enjoyed being up here, so.
And that's hard, it's still hard work, you know?
It's hard work.
I went out and took some video of them while they were working and, uh, they always impressed me with how they're so organized. Like it's marching, you know, carrying wood to the chipper. Anyway, they're really, really good at it.
Most of the other cities are really surprised that we're done with our chipping because they're just trying to get started or come the summer and some of them have had to bump it to fall. Stan Shorke had to bump theirs to fall because there's no people available.
Yeah.
And I said.
Hey, Ted, will you, uh, thanks?
Yeah.
They actually ended up giving us an extra week. So they had committed to two weeks for chipping, but because they love Woodland Hills so much, he called up and he says, hey, we've got, uh, we'll stay there an extra week if you want us to and help. So they actually ended up helping our mitigation crew, uh, some of the work they were doing as well for another week here in the city. So we got a little extra work out of them.
So is there any concern about us? Uh, I mean, is this, do, do you see this as being a, a long-term? Or is it, is the writing on the wall that it's going to get more difficult?
We are at the point where any, any year now it could stop just because they're, they're in demand by Provost big time clearing brush now. And other cities are just really stepping it up because of the wooie and the insurance and all that baloney. They, they are only with us because they want to be with us, in my view. I'm probably picking the wrong words here, but I see them as, as long as residents will continue to go out to them when they're working and thanking them, that means a lot to them. I, I, I proved that this year. They, they like to be, as any people do in hard jobs, they like to be recognized and thanked for their efforts out while they're out in the street. And when I walk out there, their boss guys get out of the truck and they don't know me from anybody. But they, they want to know how we feel about what they're doing. And I hope our citizens continue to thank them. That's what builds and keeps them wanting to come here.
Well, I just worry about a city like Provo with more political clout, uh, getting a county commissioner to redirect them or something, but.
They love it up here in the spring. They love the trees. I would say go out in your yards when you know they're coming and throw corn out, bring all the deer to your yard.
Yeah.
They love seeing the wildlife. They like working in the trees, so, so, yeah.
The other thing is, because a lot of them were here during the fires of 2018. And they saw, because we had already been doing chipping for several years prior to that. And they recognized that our city takes it seriously and our residents take it seriously. They weren't saving homes that were, were already in a, in a dire situation. They were saving homes that were, had already done everything in their power to protect themselves. And so they put themselves on the line protecting our city. And I think that still, that mentality has kept trickling down to, not only do we like to go to Woodland Hills, but those residents care enough to do their part so that when we do our part, it is a mutual, um, partnership. And they want to make sure that we continue to feel safe and to have that experience with them.
Great. Well, that was awesome. They, uh, to be honest with you, it was reduced a bit this year with equipment.
We, we didn't have a chipper sitting here in our parking lot for a month or two like we had last spring. And it's because that chipper couldn't stay here. And, and so, yeah, them coming a little time to spend with our guys to clear other areas of the city, that extra week, they had a chipper with them. And so that was, and that's an expensive part of the process too. So anyway, let's keep our fingers crossed for 2024.
Sure. Well, and thanks, uh, to those involved for maintaining a good relationship too.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and I did neglect to excuse Councilmember Lunt. She's in Yellowstone. So, uh, I don't know if you are going to offer a report and, uh.
I don't think we've got any update right now, not that I've been apprised of, so.
All right.
I think we're just moving along and getting a few things wrapped up and then we'll get it all submitted and then we'll get it all installed and it should be good.
Well, she's there witnessing how a real park runs, I guess, uh, in Yellowstone, right?
A little different scale, but yeah, I think you're right.
All right. Thank you. Okay, city council reports. Right back to you, Ben.
So Utah or South Utah Valley Solid Waste District, um, not really much has changed. The new transfer stations moving along. So the current transfer station is, is designed for about, you know, a hundred ton a day. We're currently at about 500 ton a day. So the, the new building is very much needed. I think it can scale to about thirteen hundred ton a day. So it's got some great growth.
When is its opening day?
Uh, next year. So we're still a bit out, but that's the hope. Um, and right now we're actually ahead of schedule. So if you ever drive down there on just Main Street in Spanish, you go underneath the freeway and you keep on going and you pass the airport and then you kind of get almost to Springville and you look left, there's a massive huge building with concrete walls. That's it. So it's, it's pretty cool. So they're actually also, we built, because of that construction requirement, and I need to talk to Ted about this, but we had to build a massive crane road because they had to, they poured those walls flat and then they tilted them up. And so we had to build a huge, biggest crane you can find, road around the whole building. And inside that road is like six layers of GeoGrid that we've got to now rip out the road. So it was there just for construction and it has to come out. So I'm working to see if we can't get the GeoGrid because it should work fine and then we can use it in West Lofer. So. We're seeing, so I've got a few hopeful things. I've put it in everybody's ear and I'll keep harassing.
Yeah, no, great.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Uh, Councilmember Kinnison.
Uh, real quick, I attended the nine one one dispatch meeting, the board meeting, and, uh, there was a lot of chatter again on employee policies. They're improving the policies of employees, for example, helping pay for education and so on. The employee market in that industry is very competitive. And so they are, they're, they're looking at all of their employee policies and improving them. And, and where they can and the board approves, you know, they, they try and give them a little bit of methods to keep their employees. There was an interesting chat as well about negative reports from Colorado on THC legalization. Teen problems are on the rise. This is throughout Colorado where it's legal. Uh, it hasn't gone as well as, as, uh, the, the people have hoped. But yeah, so the doctors research on THC and they have been able to do a lot of research out of that state because they, they were one of the early, um, legalizing. Uh, but caregivers are seeing many, many issues that they didn't project. So there may be more information coming on that. But, uh, the other thing I want to mention is a lot of our citizens use PulsePoint. It's how you follow our emergency calls. The fire department and our medical teams don't use that as much anymore except as a backup. But, uh, PulsePoint was, there was talk of it just being discontinued. And it's being discontinued due to funding. But some of the members of the board indicated, um, they were going to try and look for another month to try and find the funds to keep that going. It's only a few thousand a year. But, uh, there was huge interest in trying to keep that going, which surprises me because sometimes the public knowing things doesn't help us respond. But, but yeah, Ted.
One, one quick comment on that.
The council's benefit. There, and I, I know one of the other concerns that's been brought up in chief's meetings too is, and I saw it happen just this last week on, on our city, privacy issues because someone took a snapshot screenshot of that and posted it on Facebook. And it gives address, it gives the call.
Yep.
And, and then there was all the chatter going on after that. And that, that starts violating some privacy issues. And so I know there's been some concerns along with costs about what the citizens are sharing and how they're sharing it.
I got a few calls about that and saying, what is this app doing? If something happens at my house, it's going to show up and I'm going to be on there and everybody's going to come over to my house because that's exactly what happened at the incident in our city. And so people are worried about their privacy issues because it tells your exact address and it tells it's medical, it's fire, it's, it tells why they're there, which is, I mean, I can understand what the purpose of it was, but at the same time, people who are in distress don't want the whole town showing up at their house to say, what's going on? And then putting it on Facebook. Who knows what's going on, right? It's, it's, it's rough for those, especially when the outcome is what it was. I think it's really hard then for families to.
Well, we talk about this every meeting in our fire department about how important it is for us not to give out improper information. And, and we, we are very careful. And it is sad that, that, that citizens get away with that because it doesn't help usually.
Well, maybe if you.
If you talk to your friends and neighbors, I would encourage you just, if they use it, just say, that's great, but please don't post anything.
Maybe you can talk about it at dispatch meeting about just, the service is nice, but can there be anything to put the privacy issues?
Yeah.
How does the data get to PulsePoint?
Well, from what I understand, it comes from dispatch or comes through dispatch. And I think they're the ones that house the software. They from PulsePoint Dispatch does. So it comes through dispatch and it's usually fairly, we have our own app that we use as a department that gives us a lot more detail. This one's pretty generic compared to, you know, what we use. But, but it's still, it gives enough information that it's a little bit concerning once people start posting it. If they see it for themselves, that, you know, that's one thing. But when you start seeing it posted in social media, like within minutes after the call, it, it's not only concerning to the people that are having the incident, but is EMS, you know, we start getting a lot of people showing up and we're trying to keep it. I, I wish you guys could see our EMS, uh, personnel on these calls. It's just amazing to watch. They're very chaotic, lots of people. And then you start getting half the neighborhood showing up because they've seen where the address is. And it just, it becomes much more difficult for them to do their job, so.
So I'm actually not okay with it showing up on PulsePoint. If, if you're going to stop privacy issues, you have to stop it at the source. There is no other way. Any other way is just, you know, the little boy in his finger in the dam.
Right.
You're going to lose. So if, if it is an issue and dispatch is the one that's putting it out there.
Yeah.
And you don't need it, then I think it would be wise to tell dispatch, quit putting it out there.
The, the problem is, is by law, there, there is a lot that goes on in public safety that is public. And, and people demand, there, there are scan, they can hear our radio traffic. There's people in our city that can hear our radio traffic.
Buy those little bucks.
Yeah. And in fact, even on our private.
There's an app you could do it.
Joke around on, we quit joking around because we've been caught, you know, just, you know, bring some treats, Ted, you know? But.
Then half the neighborhood shows up and don't have enough treats.
I think that, that's where we've crossed over to Dave's point. We've crossed over into, and people misusing it.
Well, and, and don't, don't get me wrong. People are still going to post on Facebook.
Yeah.
You know, the neighbor's going to find out what's going on next door. They're going to post on Facebook. You will never stop that. That's, that's the world we live in. But what you don't have to allow is you don't have to allow an official app to be posted on the Facebook.
Yeah, that was a little, I mean, that was a little concerning. That was the first time I've really thought, you know? I mean, I've got PulsePoint, you know, my wife has it and stuff like that. And I, I have it mainly because it's a backup because it, there's been times where that has been the app that's went off that's alerted me, you know? So, but, but when I saw that, I was a little concerned about how it can get used in the public. And even if they just took off and left it more general, medical, Woodland Hills, you know, fine. I think the reason this was initiated, this whole app thing was because of fires and incidents like that. It gave people a warning if, if there was something going on in their city, there's a fire and they need to be concerned about. But, but when you see, you know, medical stuff and addresses given and that showing up, then it's, and people starting posting on Facebook and, yeah, it's, it's a little concerning.
And to your point out, I made a note, I will ask the other cities how they deal with, with the public problems that we're having on, on this.
I think some of it's just how small we are, right? If that siren goes off.
They hear it.
The whole city hears it. Because you don't hear it anywhere else, right? You don't hear it from Provo, you don't hear Salem go off. Sometimes we slightly, but we don't care. But when it's, now maybe I'm a little more sensitive because my house was right there, right? And so when I hear you guys fly out of here.
You know, it's.
I know it's Woodland Hills and so.
That's why we rarely use sirens at two in the morning because everyone in town will wake up. So you pre, we go out a lot at night. You probably never even hear us.
We appreciate it. But I do, I'm to that point. I think, you know, what if PulsePoint went the way of the dodo? I, I don't know what the bad would be, right?
Could I make a counterpoint?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I had a personal experience and I'll give this to you. I understand everybody's, uh, thoughts on this. But I was sitting in Black Bear Diner having dinner with my family and my PulsePoint went off saying CPR was needed nearby. I ran over to the Red Lobster parking lot and started CPR on a gentleman who had gone down in the, in the parking lot. This is the, the, the big thing that PulsePoint's here for is to alert pass nearby people. It's not, I, it's happened to be on a trading night and I was in full gear, believe it or not. And I'm in, in Orem and I go give CPR to a gentleman in a parking lot with a police officer until the paramedics arrived. This, I just want to give you that counterpoint that there is a good thing about this, about PulsePoint that is, you know, you set it up to give you CPR alerts and it will do it. It actually works. I've done it. It's, it, it surprised the heck out of me. But just, just for, just something for your thought, just two cents there.
I like that. I just, I wonder if having it just open to everybody might be the issue.
But we don't make that call, right? I mean, that.
It's on the app stores and people go find it and.
I have it.
But I mean, like what Dave was saying though, I mean, so our dispatch, you say they're obliged to provide that information. I mean, so to the extent they're obliged, I don't know. There's anything that can be done. I mean, if the app's out there and then the information's out there, it is what it is. And you just hope that people will act with discretion and what they put on social media.
There's a lot more for me to learn. I, I, I sense now that Brian mentioned CPR that that is a big positive to this group that, that, that you can set yourself up to be notified and help somebody. But, um, but I will ask them if they are seeing the negative side of it as well as the positive. Cause I don't, I don't know if this, I'm sure it goes on in other cities, but I don't know to what extent.
Yeah.
Well, and again, we're a small city. We hear the fire, fire alarm or the fire sirens and you're going to get people who showed up.
Even if they just made a tweak and didn't give an address on there. I mean, that'd be, that'd be just great, you know? Still had all the other benefits, just not the specific location. Yeah. Cause that's when it gets, then everyone, then everyone starts pulling up their LDS Tools app. Oh, you know.
Even when the neighbors see it, they know it's serious enough that they're, they're not the ones that are going all over Facebook. It's other people who aren't close that are saying, oh, something's happening in our city. Look, it just came up on PulsePoint. Oh my gosh. And, and then they start posting pictures and everybody starts talking about who it is. And then the last post is, he died. And that just is. And then the last post is he died. And that just is rough. I think that's just really rough.
Can we remove that post? I mean.
Maybe we should figure out a way to ban Facebook. We're looking at the wrong thing here.
Well, to your point, Jody, I mean, it does, I mean, it's after the fact now, but it, it might be something that just because of the sensitivity of information.
I'll talk to Mike Reed about that if somebody puts it up.
Maybe we can put something on the Facebook that said something about the app and respecting people's privacy. Not everyone wants.
That would be better. When, when you start deleting messages and I'm, I'm.
Right, censoring.
Talking about necessarily the city council, I'm talking about individuals. You're walking a very, very dangerous line. People have a right to free speech. They have a right to say what they're going to say. And.
Well, in Facebook, it's a little bit different because it is a privately owned company. Unless it's a, a threat to bodily harm or something else, which the Supreme Court just came out and ruled about, those can be deleted immediately. Other things, as long as you have rules in your, on your page, and we do on our community news page, we could just add this rule in and then if it was violated, it can be removed.
Well, again, that's because the community group and that's Facebook's rules. There are other apps that don't have those same policies. I'm just saying that as a city, this is one of those areas where I, I think we need to just basically say, that's not our site. That's not our group. That's not, we don't have control over that. And we hope that all of our citizens will have the decency to not be so hurt. But, you know.
Yeah.
We don't control that. I can't control.
They can post, you know, I think it's appropriate to post obituaries after the fact so that citizens in town will know that happened. But in the moment, I think it's stressful. So I think private pages can figure out their own rules. That is a private page, so it's not our city page. Our city page, we don't post anything like that on. And every post has to be approved first. So we're not in danger of that happening on our city page.
Okay. Anything else, Doral?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lunch is Iksky again, just to be clear on that. Councilmember Malkovich?
I have a couple of things. With the Utah Legislative, they had interim meetings. They've also had a couple of special sessions and probably will have another one. With that, they allocated funds for continued disaster relief, state of emergency funding. As, as you might know, we at the city level have a, a level of, even if we don't declare an emergency, there, we still have access to some of that funding through the county as our agent. Then it goes to the state and then the state uses their FEMA dollars to on our behalf. So after this special session, we were asked to submit any, any claims that we had with regards to our flooding. And we only had really one incident, which was that incident on Woodland Hills Drive. So Lori and Corbett submitted some paperwork, some mitigation paperwork, and it was for the amount of $9,495.04. But we need to submit some more paperwork. We didn't submit enough. So I'm going to talk with Lori. They called me, they talked to me today about that. We need to break down our receipts for the materials, the equipment fees, the personnel, the overtime hours, meaning those that volunteered to help, which I think there were only two, need to have their name, their address, how many hours, what equipment was used so that all of those formulas can get put in. So it showcases right for the FEMA forms.
How much do we have on that? Cause Corbett's gone for a while.
Yeah.
Lori is, Lori's gone now too, right? Or is she? Well, the reason I ask is because she is not going to girls camp.
She's not going to girls camp, but she does have another, how much, yeah, how much time do we have?
I think we had 13 hours, I mean, 30 hours.
No, no, no. Meaning how much time do we have to get them the updated information?
Yeah, I think we have 30 days from the incident. So from when they asked for it. So I think that we.
We need to get it in the next.
Next week, we will be fine.
Okay. And so we need to break down hours.
I can tell you all of this.
If you have, you can just kind of forward it to me between.
And also they wanted to know, Corbett sent them one little teen video that was just kind of this water going in the Rockline ditch.
I've got all the film and everything.
And they said, that's not enough. So we need to get as many pictures as possible as an addendum to this report so that they will actually know, because it needs to support the, the reimbursement. So it will go to the county. The county vets it to make sure that it qualifies and they send it to the state. And the states usually will do what, what the county has done, if it's done in accordance. So we just need to update our thing. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And then the other thing with emergency management I wanted to talk to you today about was, and they, we talked a little bit about weed abatement in terms of fire control. So I'm going to be putting some more things in our, in our newsletter that shows our ordinance for weed and grass abatement on the easements and on your land. So I'm going to be putting that out because it's going to, it's, it's green now. Like one day it's going to be all brown and it's going to be a fire danger. So I'm going to put that out. The city is doing mosquito abatement. They can't even keep up. So we may be seeing an increase even here, as far away as here for additional bugs and mosquitoes and things that are coming out because the county is, can't keep up with it. The other thing we talked about was firework restrictions and of course, we're the only city that completely bans fireworks. I told Jody about getting the signage up this week, making sure that both of our regular city signs are up on our banners. And then those smaller signs that we had made that go around and say, you're going to get prosecuted if you do fireworks. But another city who has had issues and only has one section of, of, of things, what, one of the things that they do in addition to posting stuff all over and on their social media, et cetera, they have a flyer that they take to all the surrounding firework booths and say, when you sell fireworks, hand this out. So he's sending it to me and I'm going to go take that around this week to the ones in Salem. It just says, hey, just so you remember, Woodland Hills is off limits for any fireworks. So I thought that was a good, a good plan for us to update what, you know, another level of what we can do. Cause we know people who come up here at night to look over the city or whatever, they pass by our signage and it's dark. They may or may not read it, but if we have that when they buy them, then I think that would be helpful. I have for the newsletter, I was going to send it out today and I thought I could just wait until after council meeting. So I have it in there. Doral sent me stuff about the new fire truck, truck. I'll put something in there about the chipping crews and thinking the EMS, do any of you have any additional things that you would want in? Jody and I have already talked about which ordinances we're going to highlight, but I just wanted to give you the chance if you had anything else. And deputy, do you have updated numbers for the report you gave me?
For me, yes.
Okay. If you'd send those to me, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
So mayor?
Yeah.
In the past, if I recall, it seems like our, some of the firemen have driven around the city a little bit during that time. Are, are there plans to do that again? I think that's really a good, a good thing. People see that and they're reminded, you know, no fireworks and, and so forth.
Our chief is nodding and, and I think we should expect a threatening call from our chief too. If I, if last year and years prior.
Now, we, we, we drew every year control and we're buying people this year.
I'll put that in too, then.
Maybe a question asked, but planning on the third and fourth, but the question mark is the second meeting on Saturday night?
Well, we kind of got a long weekend thing going here. So.
Long weekend. So we've got third and fourth, we were planning to, kind of waiting on the second Saturday night?
I think so, because that's the same night as, as a lot of the cities are doing their fireworks, that stadium of fire night. There's a lot of people who are doing fireworks.
I will be there too.
Okay. Nice. It'll be a real show of force.
Good.
And I will reiterate our fines. And if, if anyone sees anything, call 911.
Please.
All right.
It's better.
It's more, it was more fire dancers.
Yeah.
Yeah, fire dancers. And whenever fireworks, we're just dancing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And good, good question, Wayne, and thanks Ted. All right. Councilmember Pratt?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And for me, update on MAG, as is the case, I imagine with lots of budgetary matters. There was some reprioritization of some road efforts at the last meeting. Just not enough money to go around. None of it was Woodland Hills, but there was that little stretch between Woodland Hills Drive and Salem that was supposed to be upgraded, but that got bumped. So we won't be seeing that done anytime too soon. But the mayor of Salem, he was.
Stretch is this?
Uh, it's, it, no, it's, it's the state road by the Krishna Temple. So from Woodland Hills Drive, I, I don't remember where the endpoint was in Salem, but it's from Woodland Hills Drive to Fourth. I don't know. Anybody familiar enough with Salem, deputy? It was 400 something. So that makes sense that it would be that.
That, no for Parkland.
Yeah. Well, it would have been nice, but alas, no money. So just have to wait for that one, I guess. And then SESD, I, I, I do more lawyering, well unofficial lawyering. SESD has got some legal woes too. There were some hearings involving disputes with neighboring cities. I don't really have anything to report beyond that. And I'm not lawyering for SESD, just to make that clear.
Did they process my refund?
I, that did not come up, but.
It didn't?
No, did, okay. Well.
Supposed to be one.
Send a, send an email to Mark Holdaway and copy me and then I won't let that one slip by.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Possible upcoming agenda items? Everybody have anything?
We only have one meeting in July.
Yep, we do. And it's going to be a big one. So I, I, I think that.
What do we have on there so far?
Should we bring our sleeping bags?
Reminder, yeah, we have a presentation that, on the roads thing. I, I know Ted's encouraged it to keep it short.
Yeah. So roads maintenance, roads planning, basically that's going to be an hour, I believe, right?
I think Ted's tried to encourage it to be less, but.
I suggest that they hit the highlights. A lot of times I've seen the presentation of these guys, which is great when they're presenting to engineers, maybe, you know, they didn't have a meeting to have, that's all. Presenting to residents and council members.
Laypeople.
Hit the highlights, you know, hit the highlights and not get too much into the specifics of, you know, performance, create a list and stuff like that.
Perfect.
That's what we want here.
Well, I just think that, you know, it'll be good to have a bigger picture presentation regarding some steps that we can take. And then we've also got the, I mean, there's an update on the mitigation. I, I, I know that Janet wanted to be here for that. So.
Grant.
I think that that would be something that we would be discussing in, in terms of.
On which?
On the covert money.
All the covert money.
And.
Have we heard back from them on, if that?
Yeah. So.
On the covert money, we heard back from them? Oh, yes.
And you can tell from Ted's subdued countenance that it's not good news.
I was, and that's been a while though. So I had to think back and going, oh, did they get that fix, that problem fixed? But it's the problem that we're hearing back on.
And so, but there's some issues with respect to timing that, you know, I think does take it back to where do we go from here? And so we do need to have that discussion and the plan is to have that in our next meeting. Those are the only things that I can think of, but those are going to potentially be fairly, I don't know, well discussed. So if nobody has any other suggestions, then we will adjourn. Take a, let's reconvene at 7:35.
I just sent those to Jody, those pictures.
We have business to do. We got to do business.
Next one is going to be a, a more of a marathon, but. Okay. All right. Well, we'll call the city council meeting to order and councilmember Pratt, would you please offer our invocation? And then councilmember Malkovich, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Yeah.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have together. We're grateful for the beautiful weather that thou has blessed us with. We're grateful for the moisture that we received over the winter. And we're very grateful for our citizens and for the opportunity to live in this area. We pray that thou would bless us as we discuss our business, that we might do so in a spirit of civility and, and a sincere desire to do what's right. We ask for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we switch that order up?
So I am going to make a comment here. Councilmember Pratt brought it to my attention that we had been doing things wrong. And we should be offering the invocation first and then the pledge. So.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Appreciate him letting us know and we've made that change.
All right. Well, I was kind of treating the pledges, the opening hymn and then the invocation is the, but yeah.
The only place where it's weird is BYU devotionals because they, they kind of switch things up, but anyway.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Most meetings I go to, it's like this.
With the.
With the prayer first and the pledge.
Yeah. That's how SESD's meetings are.
It's actually according to the, like if you go online and say which should come first, they'll tell you that the prayer should come before the, before the pledge.
All right.
Interesting.
Yeah. Well, we're doing it right now. So thank you.
Sure.
All right. Public comment.
Our public left.
Yeah, I know. Well, we've got some public.
Ben's public.
Ben, come on up and talk with us.
Okay. And, unless Brian has something? Okay. Well, let's close the public comment portion and move on to item 13. Decision regarding ordinance 2023-13, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Oh.
Okay. So a motion by councilmember Hilliard, a second by councilmember Malkovich. Jody, I don't have my cheat sheet. This is a roll call, right? Okay. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnaston?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Item 14, resolution 2023-18, appointing Wayne Franzen as the zoning enforcement officer.
I'll move.
Okay. A motion by councilmember Pratt.
I'll second that.
Seconded by councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Item 15, resolution 2023-19, appointing Chris Tambasco as building official.
Can I vote on this after he's approved my house?
No. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion by councilmember Pratt, a second by councilmember Malkovich. A motion by Councilmember Pratt, a second by Councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ben?
Is that a pay decision?
It is, yeah. And then that cost will be, um.
That's right.
It will be, uh, collected from the homeowner.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, that, that passes. Um, item 16, um, forwarding a change in zoning request for Thousand Oaks Platte F lots 161 to 167 to the planning commission.
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second that.
A second by Councilmember Kinnaston. That, that's just a regular vote, right, Jody? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And item 17, the decision regarding the jaws of life as proposed by our chief.
Make a motion to approve that. I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Pratt and a second by Councilmember Kinnaston. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Um, a closed session. I think that, well, I mean, I think that next, um, next meeting will have more substance, but if anyone would like to enter a closed session, we certainly can.
Is, is there any validity in going over the additions?
Um, do you mean the, the request by the fuges? I mean, I'm not gonna try to conceal this. Um, I mean, I, I don't really have anything to report there, but we can certainly discuss it if, if you'd like. So, but I mean, we, we, uh, we don't have any decision that's been, um.
We have a hearing this week though.
On the 30th, yeah.
This Friday.
So unless there's a request to go in a closed session.
Is that hearing on Friday to what?
That is the argument for our motion to dismiss.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's why next, I mean, and obviously everyone's welcome. I don't know if there's a link available yet, but, uh, if you wanna zoom in or link in, it's, it's there for you.
Be an exciting way to spend a Friday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, then with that, I will, uh, accept the, or entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by, uh, Councilmember Kinnaston?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Wow.
Not bad.